Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 22nd, 2018 Township Hillsborough Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Ms. Forrest?
Here.
Ms. Beccarina, absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hespad?
Here.
Mr. Scoville, absent. Mr. Weinstein, absent. Vice Chairman Julian, absent. Committeeman Sarachi?
Here.
Committeeman Delkor?
Here.
Chairman Lapardi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our first order of business is before the board is the deposition of the minutes dated February 1st, 2018.
The eligible members are Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Delkor, Ms. Forrest, the chairman, Mr. Hespad.
Thank you. We'll offer a motion to approve the minutes dated February 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hespad?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Committeeman Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman Lapardi?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we have to have one of our board members accuse themselves because he cannot vote on the next order of business and he cannot participate in the second order of business. So, Mr. Wagner, you are free to go.
Join that.
Doesn't he have to make a presentation?
He might. We might see him on the other side of the camera. All right. So first, we have a disposition of a resolution, 814 CRE LLC slash 814 Development Veterinary Hospital File 17 PB04 MSPV. Copy of that is in your packet for your...
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself, Mr. Sarachi in his prior life, Mr. Delkor, and Mr. Peason.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we'll roll call.
Do we have a second?
Yes, we have a second.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Committeeman Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman Lapardi?
Yes. And we have the same application number, but for the parking lot, L 32.02 hashtag or slash hashtag slash trailer, L 33.01, which is file 17 PB12 MSPV.
Same group.
Same group. I'll make a motion for that one.
So moved.
And a second for Mr. Peason, and roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Committeeman Delkor?
Yes.
Committeeman Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman Lapardi?
Yes. We're going to change the order a little bit because I was brought to my attention that we have a couple of people in the audience that wanted to say something in front of the board that is not on tonight's agenda. So instead of having them go through the planning board business at this time, if you have something to say, please come up to the mic here on the left, state your name and your address, and throw your question out. Just a microphone right over here, if you could, please.
Anthony Daniele, 99 Oxford.
Could you turn the mic off, please?
Sure. D A N I E L L O.
And just lift the microphone up and just hold it a little closer. It's a sensitive mic.
I actually need that, those papers that I gave you.
Is that mic on? Can you just tap it and make sure it's on? All right, good. Leave it real close.
You got it. We're actually here to just ask, we're under the, this is a historical meeting for the Historical Society, is that correct?
This is a planning board meeting.
It's a planning board meeting.
As a historical society, it is a different meeting.
It's a different meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'm probably, we're probably at the wrong place. We were told that this was a historical society. So, a little bit embarrassing, but...
They might be meeting across the hall, actually.
Oh, is that where it is?
Yeah.
In the multipurpose room?
Right church, wrong.
Yeah, you're close.
Fantastic. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Glad we didn't make you wait.
Thanks.
All right.
The last Thursday, so they meet across the hall.
All right. So then, we will now go to, next there's a hazardous mitigation plan update. Mr. Maske is going to read something. The copy is also in your packet for you to read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Sheridan, our Director of the Office of Emergency Management, asked me to read this. It's a kind of a public service announcement, if you will. They are updating the countywide hazard mitigation plan, and he'd like me to make this announcement of sorts. The Hillsborough Township Engineering Department and Office of Emergency Management are in the process of updating the township's hazard mitigation plan. Hazard mitigation has sustained, are sustained actions to reduce long-term risk to life and property. The township participates in a multi-jurisdictional plan with Somerset County. The mitigation plan identifies the township's vulnerability to various natural hazards that are typically present, along with an array of actions and projects for reducing key risks. Successful participation in the plan update process is required to maintain eligibility to apply for mitigation project grants. The township invites public input for this update. Residents with questions or comments can contact the Hillsborough Township Engineering Department or Office of Emergency Management at 908-369-4313. Additional information on this update can be found on the township's website and Emergency Management Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And that number again is 908-369-4313. Onto the business at hand. We have a presentation from our capital planning committee on the 2018 capital budget proposals. Please come forward and have at it. All the way in the front row. Just a reminder to keep the microphones, one close to you and the other one up front for recording, please. You got it.
Okay. So, my name is Frank Herbert. I'm the committee chairman this year. In the room, we have several members of the committee.
Rajdev.
Steve Monti behind me.
Just speaking to the microphone and...
Steve Monti behind me, Bob Peason, and Bob Wagner.
In the back.
In the back.
And we also have Rich Resevie, and we have our police in back there, and we also have our engineer back there, just so we can see it.
Okay. So the charge given to the capital planning committee is to review all the capital requests from the different departments, prioritize them, and then present them to the planning board, which in turn presents it to the township committee, who in, I guess, a may timeframe strikes the capital budget.
A little closer to the mic there, Frank. Be a rock star.
Frank, you should know, Frank, you're on that side.
Yeah.
Don't make me...
I hope the previous person wasn't...
If you prefer to use the handheld mic, use that one.
Maybe I'll do that. This is one that works, too.
Does it turn to green, tell a green button, green light?
Hold it. Hopefully, there's a new mic on capital planning.
There's one right here.
You have to push and hold it till it turns green.
Pull the one from...
The problem is...
Pull that one.
There we go. Thank you.
There we...
Rock and roll. There we go.
Is this thing on?
That work is...
We should probably put this on a capital button. It's not a big enough either. Wouldn't last for five... Okay. So what we did this year on January 31st, we had our first meeting, and we had all of the department heads come in and present their capital requests to the committee. We came back on February 6th, and we went through all the requests, discussed them, and we prepared, prioritized everything, and then we prepared the report that you're going to hear, that we're going to talk about tonight. Okay. So in front of you, you should have the list, right, from our proposals. Now, what we did, we divided, we gave you two lists. One roads, and the other one is non-roads, because the roads are so expensive that if we, even when probably to the third road, there would be no money left over for any of the other non-road projects. So the first one we'll address will be the road projects. Okay. So what we did, we had 14, 13, 14 roads that were proposed this year, and one new technology, okay, which we'll discuss, which is the chip seal. Okay. So the first road that we're proposing is Beacon Lane, Phase 1 between Ammer Road and Triangle Roads, about 4,050 feet. Okay. And I understand just today the township found out that we will be getting a state grant for this. And that's the reason we put it as number one. Not that it was in worse shape than any other roads, but it was the best one that would, you know, most likely prospect to get that grant. Okay. During the discussions, if the grant hadn't come through, we were going to propose pushing South Triangle Road to the top, because that road was in worse condition, and it's probably more heavily used between the school and Mary Mother of God Church on that road. It's a heavily-used road. Okay. So anyway, so Beacon Lane was our first, number one. Number two is a new technology, okay? And I'm going to ask Tom, the Township Engineer, Tom Ballinger, to come up and just tell you what this new technology is.
Hi, how you doing? What I propose, it's called a high-performance chip seal. And what this is, is a coating material about a half-inch thick. That's not your typical chip seal that you're used to, that you see just a tar coating and a stone that's put down. This is an actual material that will basically surface the road and seal the roads. It's a thicker material than your stone. It doesn't allow loose stone. Myself and Rich Resevie, we've researched it for the last year. We went to a couple of different towns. Branchburg's using it. Reddington Township have used it already. And we went to visit some of the roads, and it will put a nice coating on the road and try to seal some of the road. You have to use that on roads that are basically not in the worst of shape. It has to be a reasonable-conditioned road, and you seal the road. And we were told that you can get by maybe five to 10 years of life out of the road. So that's on the list that we would put money towards that and actually try some of the roads. I think I proposed about five or six roads, but I think the board cut it down to about two roads to try it.
Three, actually. Ammer, two, to Long Hill, Orton Road, and New Center Road.
There's two roads.
Wardsville Road and Orton Road to New Center.
And this material, you know, will seal the road, actually make a nice driving surface. It's a little rougher surface than a standard pavement, but it will buy some time. And we're making some good progress on getting our roads paved, but this will preserve some of the roads out there. And one of the things that I also looked at is, one of the costs that's driving up the cost of our repaving of our roads are state mandates. Every time you pave a road, you have to upgrade your storm drainage system with the smaller eco-heads, keep the bottles and all out. You have to retrofit your handicap ramps. This material, so far, we're told that it's not considered fully repaving, so we don't have to address all those issues. They're due to change that, though, so we want to use it, get some down on a road before they change that requirement, because they might change it and consider it paving of roads, and then we got to do those state mandates.
Tom, comparatively, how's it, from a cost perspective? What's the...
It's about a quarter of the cost. You take an average road, a standard road, like we have, 30-foot-wide road, you're looking in the past years, it's approximately 90 to 100 hours a foot to pave a road. And that's including all your state mandates. This is about $20 a foot. So it's about a quarter of the price, a little less than a quarter of the price to put this coating down. And you can buy, we're told, I mean, five to 10 years. And your standard road paving, you know, technically, road paving should last you about 20, 25 years. So you're getting half the life out of it, but it's a quarter of the cost.
I'm assuming you're going to re-stripe the roads after that is done?
You still have to re-stripe.
And any kind of new things put in, like reflectors along the lines? Because I see you have some country roads here at night, or anything that included or not?
Oh, yeah.
So the reflector?
You have to still stripe the road when you're done. It's just like your repave, so you'd have to re-stripe the road.
Okay.
So, sorry. Help me understand. So I see that at the bottom of the list, right? That's number, is that the 14 we're talking about? We made it number two?
On your list.
Table one shows the projects prioritized originally.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Two pages down.
Pull the mic over. Chair, use...
I got you, sir.
We want to give you the rock star, too, you know? You get your chance on the mic.
Thank you.
Just repeat if she's at all.
I'm sorry?
Just repeat what you just said, if you could, please.
Okay. Just for the records, it's all that I mentioned. Table one presented is how the projects were originally requested. Table two, two pages down, is how the committee reprioritized the projects, based on several considerations that we took. I may also add to point out that the original request for the chip seal project was about $1 million. We have looked at it again and agreed upon a much lower amount, at about 13% of the original request, at $133,000.
Well, what we asked Tom and Rick Resevie to come back to us was a recommendation for top candidates. And I guess these were chosen because they have less traffic?
Yeah. Typically, we, the roads that you pick, is that these roads were roads that are not in, if they're in too poor condition and they're really bad, you can't use this material on it, because then you're wasting your money. It has to be on a road that's in reasonably good condition, that you know that you're going to preserve it. So instead of, you know, you're getting more life out of it. It's basically a preservation type. You can't put this stuff on roads that are completely falling apart. It would just, you'd be throwing your money away. And one of the things, and we have to, certain roads, like if they're very high-volume with a lot of truck traffic, the manufacturers don't recommend it also. So we would like to use it on some of the newer roads, some of the development roads it would work good on. So that's what we're looking at.
Thanks, Tom.
You know, for the people watching on the video here, let me go back to Beacon Lane. That was $538,000. For the chip seal that we just discussed, it's about $133,000. Number three on our list, again, I mentioned to South Triangle Road, and that'd be $482,000. Number four was Clausen Avenue in its entirety. That's 5,700 feet. That'll be $482,000. Number five was Camplain Road between 206 and Sunnymead Road. That'd be $309,000. Number six is Riverside Drive between River Road and Clausen, 2,500 feet, $167,000. Number seven is Wartsville Road between Long Hill Road and Montgomery Road. That'd be $193,000. Number eight, Rata Boulevard between 206 and Strike Lane. This one, we had a member of the public come in and address the committee. Actually, the person was representing one of the major landlords in the industrial area back there. And he brought to our attention that, I guess, that's the original paving. It was put down almost 30 years ago, and there were a couple of spots that are really rough at this point. And he wanted to see that section paved for the benefit of his tenants back there.
Yeah, I think he was looking for a reason why, you know, he has some issues fronting his, some of his properties out.
Yeah.
But probably should have addressed the rates that he was charging.
Yeah, so...
More so than road conditions.
Okay. Number nine is Strike Lane in its entirety, 3,200 feet. That'd be $312,000. Eileen Court, 1,100 feet. That'd be $132,000. Andrea Avenue, 2,600 feet. That'd be $294,000. Royce Road between Valley Road and Duke's Parkway West, be $394,000. Hillsborough Road, Phase 1, between 206 and the railroad, 1,500 feet, $146,000. And Hillsborough Road between Bypass and Willa Road, 4,200 feet, be $280,000. So if the money was in the budget, that bottom line for everything would be about $4,216,000. This is our prioritization. Any question about roads?
The question I had was, I don't know if you did answer that, the grant that we got for the Beacon Lane, is that $530,000 less the grant, or is that...
No, no. As a matter of fact, let me bring Tom up again. You'll give you the exact details. This is late breaking news.
This is, this is Channel 12 here?
No. The estimate was, I think, $534,000.
$38,000.
And we received, we just got notice that we received $508,000.
A grant.
So it's almost the whole amount. They usually never grant you the whole amount. I mean, in the past years, we were receiving $200,000. This year, we did very well, you know, $508. So it's almost the whole road, but not everything. Close.
Outstanding.
Tom, I got to tell you, I can't believe you didn't get that last $30,000.
I asked for it all, but...
Thank you very much. Good job. All right. Any questions from the board on these presentations so far?
Yeah, I might have just one comment or question. I mean, I took a drive around a lot of these roads, and obviously, in a lot of them, in the top seven or eight, definitely could use new roads. I mean, I don't think there's any denying that, right? It's just finding the budget money.
I mean, this is always, you know, what the township can afford.
Right. But I just have one comment, like Orton Road. So when I drove that from New Center to the railroad, it seemed like the really bad spot was like from Bateman, or as you get really close to the, towards the railroad, and on the other side, there was a bad spot, like right by the entrance to Orton Road.
Right.
The school. But other than that, I didn't think it was that bad. So I would just say, while the technology might be a great thing and a benefit on certain roads, I'm not sure Orton Road is necessarily, you know, it's needed there. If there's other roads that might be more suitable. And then I looked at last year's list. Orton Road isn't even on that list from last year. So maybe...
And just to interject, I was on that committee as well, and as mentioned, the chip seal is meant to be put on roads that really aren't in dire need of replacement. If you put it on a bad road, it's not going to work. It's got to be put on a road that should be, maybe do and predictably going to be going bad in a couple of years. So it's more of a preventative measure than a remediation.
Right. I understood that, but I just wasn't sure. But that's good. There's definitely a couple of spots that can use it, so...
Non-road projects.
Start with the second one, not the first one.
Okay. So number one is a continuation of a project that we've been working on for the last few years, and that's replacing damaged wood guardrails at various locations in town. And this year, we're proposing another 5,500 linear feet at a cost of $100,000. And this is definitely a safety issue, and that's why we put it up as number one. Does this take us finally to where it's fully funded? Does this, we have one more year to go on this, or is this the last? Is this the last year, or we got one more?
This would be three years, three hundred...
Okay.
Don't be bashful, Tom. Come on, come on.
Stay in the front row. Save some seats.
Stay up here.
Have a seat.
Okay. So we, what we did was, this is, we did three years. They budgeted three years, 300, and we've used the money every year. This would be the fourth year, and then I need a fifth year to pretty much complete most of the old wooden guardrail. Because we have 5,500 feet of total that we went around with the public works to try to replace it. So, yeah, we'd still need another year.
Okay.
But we're making good headway on it.
Yeah.
And we replaced a lot of it. We got good prices through the Morris County Co-op to do it.
So theoretically, you have one more year to go, and then that's off the books.
Then it should be almost off the books.
Okay. Continue.
Because the next one is the traffic signal modification at Triangle Road, and what would that be? Orton?
Yeah, that was on last year's.
By Orton, yeah. And the problem here is, you're coming from the 206 direction. If you were going to make a left-hand turn, say, across from the CVS, and there's another vehicle on the opposite side making a left-hand turn, you might not see traffic coming down at high speed towards you because of the obstruction on the other. So the idea here is to put a, you know, a left-hand, left-turn arrow there, and this way prevent a collision. And well, last year, I think, we were told there was two nasty accidents at that intersection. The previous year, there were like four or five, so it is a situation. We also brought the fact that, you know, in the middle of the night, there's no traffic there at all, so you don't want to be sitting on a left red, you know? So they can adjust that by time of day, so it's only operable during busy times when you would have traffic blocking you. Okay.
Tom, just so I know, assuming that was on the list, when could that be done?
Well, if you fund it, it would have to go out to bid. We'd have to put a set of specs together and go out to bid. So it could get done this year. I mean, if we pushed it. So you'd have to put a bid package together. But we could push on it.
And, Tom, did we, when we paved Triangle Road, when we resurfaced Triangle Road, did we get the conduit work in there, or are we going to have to...
The conduit could be, we already had that checked, that the existing conduit can be used.
Okay.
They could snake another line to work the signal with the existing conduit. So it's not like you got to dig up the road.
Okay. Good.
That's, we looked into that with the county. We had the county come out, because the county maintains our signal, and they can reuse that existing conduit.
So the actual work, you know, the work needed to actually implement it is not, we're not starting from scratch?
No, you're not starting from scratch, but what we were told is that in order to put those left-turn signals on, the masks that support the light would have to be modified, changed, because they have to be longer. So you have to replace the mask, and then, of course, rewire it down to the base. The poles should, could probably be reused, but the mask arms would have to be replaced because they're longer.
Okay.
So that's your biggest cost, and then wiring everything up.
Can I just get clarified on, you mentioned like making a left toward CVS. Is it both directions on Triangle, or...
This would be for both.
Right. All right. So if you're making a left towards Orton?
Yeah.
Or, you know, Aris School?
Yeah. We would put it on both sides of Triangle.
Great.
Originally, we also, originally had it on all four sides, and, but then we kicked that around last year, that it's not as dangerous the other way. You have better sight visibility in the Orton side. So we reduced it to just, I mean, typically, you put it on all four corners, but in order to keep the cost down, we said we'd put it on just the one direction.
If I recall, that wasn't a hard turn. So it's a left just to get the traffic go, and then if there's nothing there, you can still make a left. You don't have to wait for the light to change? Is that what we had?
Yeah. Yeah, well, it depends, it can be wired in that way. You can wire it for a left turn only, and then it goes to a red arrow, or you can just have a left turn, everybody stays red. You can do it however you want. I think we talked about it, it's probably better to just have it, you could make it, you know, even without the arrow. It's just get a first couple cars through.
I guess, you know, one of the concerns is that if, you know, if you let, if it just went off, then you have the dangerous situation during the day, when, you know, at night, you don't wanna be, have people sitting there waiting for the light to change.
Well, that's right.
Okay, but at night, you don't typically have a lot of traffic that would be blocking you, and then you have, you could see headlights coming. So, at night, there's not as big a need for a red left as it is during the day.
Yeah, so you can design it in any fashion. You can design it where it's just certain hours, the arrow will work, in other hours, it will kick off. I mean, it could be designed...
All right, so my next question is, is that done by traffic study, or who makes that decision? Is that you guys?
Well, we already did have a traffic study done. We had our consult, traffic consultant look at it, and I believe his recommendation was to just have the turn only, which means you won't, you would not be able to. It's the safest way.
The hard stop, yeah. So, I'm saying, it's not the county that has to do, it's whatever the township decides.
Yes, whatever.
Looking for a time, Frank asked the time, you know, anytime you have to get more people involved, it just delays it, so...
Yeah, it takes with that. No, it's just the township, because it's our signal, and it's not connecting to any state roadway, so we could design it however we want.
Okay.
Sidewalk replacement, I do not, no, I do not remember the exact locations, if anybody does.
Well, yeah, this is, you know, this is the amount, every year, we recommend some amount, what is your seventy-five thousand dollars, just for general sidewalk replacements in town. Tom gets calls, and he has his people out there, so they, you know, keep after the sidewalks. In the past, I guess there was builder fund, and that's probably not available no longer. So, anyway, it's, again, it's a safety issue, and that's why we put it up as number three.
As we previously pointed out, that some of the considerations that we've taken while ranking our projects are based on the standards of public administration capital allocation, so safety, program outcomes, equity, historicals, where stuff has been before in the previous years, you know, they were rated somewhat higher, taking everything else into consideration. The issue of the dump trucks, as I understand, falls in one of those categories. It has appeared previously in the previous years as well. The current dump truck that we have in the township is in bad need of repair. It's a 1999 GMC dump truck. The typical purposes for which this is used is export repairs in township, which we are definitely need of, de-icing. Many people have heard say that, you know, that wasn't done very well, which of course ties into another one that we're gonna talk about in a few minutes. So, this is, you know, one thing that we've kind of ranked at position number four amongst the rankings.
Okay.
Automated salt brine maker, coming at a price of about a hundred thousand dollars, or rather, I should say, capital allocation of about a hundred thousand dollars, has been ranked next. I will go through each of the next ones, Frank, unless you have any special comments.
Okay, good.
At the end of each, I'm gonna stop to ask, is there any questions? I think that might make things go faster. So, as I understand, the engineering department, I'm sorry, the Public Works Department has also said that, you know, having our own facility to manufacture the salt brines is a distinct, you know, advantage, because there was a question about, you know, should we leave it to the county, should we have it at the township level? The resounding vote was in favor of keeping it at the township level. The next would be the 2018 Ford 350 regular cab. It's a four-wheel-drive pickup truck. It does snow plowing, et cetera. There were two requests, we have approved for one of those, comes in at about a contracted rate of thirty-three thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars. Roads and mower implement, once again, we view this as a safety issue, okay? This is, again, in bad need of repair. We ranked it at seventh. Two stainless steel truck bodies for mason dump, right, ranked at eighth, at a capital outlay of twenty-seven point seven thousand. The next one is a police request, ranked at ninth, for two radar speed detection systems. One would be used for spare, and the need isn't for every car to have one. So, looking into consideration of all of that, we've kind of ranked it at the ninth on the non-road projects, which essentially would be nineteenth in the entire, sorry, twenty-third of the entire scheme of things. The next in this sequence would be the erosion control measures. There are certain places where, you know, near Three Bridges Road, where apparently we're in lack of green, and more brown is visible, so that's one thing. The reason for putting this out here as outlined by the engineering department is that a stitch in time-saving sign, you need to put in some money right now to prevent further, you know, capital outlay going forward, and ranked at eleventh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask Tom if he wanted to add any more to that, you know?
No, I can just mention that what that is, is basically up on Mountain View and Three Bridges Road, we have a stream that's right next to the roadway, and the stream is eroding the edge of the road, and we're starting to have a couple areas where that we're, in the future, the road, well, we rode the way, the road away, and we're gonna have to address that in some fashion. So, I put some, I wanted to request some money, so we can at least start looking at a study and have some, our engineer and consultant look at that. We might have to do some lining of the stream in order to prevent that future erosion, because if we let it go too far, it could erode our road, so that's what we're looking at.
All right, moving along, we talked about the Ford 350 utility body truck, snowplow. Okay, we were down to actually ranking number twelve, which was the 350 four-wheel-drive truck with snowplow package. Ranked at thirteenth for non-road projects is a sixteen-plus-two-passenger wheelchair-accessible bus. Previous request disappeared last year as well. It was for fourteen-plus-two. The request, the ask, has not been substantially different at all, so it is sort of an upgrade, I would say, at the same rate. There was a question raised at this point, this is just to make a note, okay, nothing that sways our decision, is that apparently Rotary had donated a small van, which wasn't being used to its full capacity. It was a question from, you know, the, one of the members, and, you know, it will be taken a look into, but this does not replace the, I mean, it replaces the necessity for the sixteen-plus-two. The next in line is L3 in-car camera system. Essentially, Hillsborough Police Department is requesting an upgrade of all their, you know, in-car camera systems. What their, it is a substantial outlay, however, one thing that needs to be taken into consideration is, at a certain point, the chief thinks there would be requirements for body cameras, et cetera, too. So, this just paves for an easier path, a scalable path to that, because all our systems, if we have to add new equipments or similar new requested equipments, they might not fit exactly, you know, interface with the existing system that we have. So, there's some server upgrades, some software upgrades, et cetera. However, looking at the criticality of the requirement here, as also the scarcity of capital, we have kept it where we have, which is at the fourteenth rank amongst...
And I think that the current cameras are basically, the contract runs out at the end of the year, and basically, it can't be replaced, so if it's not approved this year, it definitely has to be on next year's.
Is this a all-or-nothing system, or could this be a phased replacement?
It was an, I don't know if there's any presentation from the police department here, however, the understanding was, that's exactly it, it isn't a scalable...
Yeah, we gotta put him on camera, he's back there, you know?
Sean Carroll.
With the system, it would, if it's, it's end of life, so end of the year, if a camera goes, we're gonna have to buy a new camera, the HD, which will be about five thousand dollars a unit.
So, I guess my question is, this L3, does it have to be purchased all at one shot, or could it be done like half the cars at one, at one time?
No, it should be all together.
It is an all-together package.
Yes, with server and all that.
Okay. All right. So, that includes all the body cameras and everything, as...
No, body cameras are separate.
This is just in-car cameras?
In-car cameras, it's a two-camera system. It's front and prisoner compartment.
Okay.
So, Sean, Lieutenant, help me understand, so the cameras that are in there today, I know that, so our contract, so our maintenance contract is up?
We don't have a ma, yeah, that's been up, okay? And it's end of life, so they're not replacing these cameras anymore. Yes, at all.
So, it's a manufacturer's support?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, officer.
So, if you don't approve it this year, it gets very close next year.
Ranked at fifteen amongst the non-road projects is the chip seal, chip seal parking lot at Dougherty Park. It is to be noted here that this is not part of the previously mentioned high-quality chip seal project. This is the standard chip seal, and it is only for the parking lot area out there. The next in line is the conference room upgrades, which was a request from the administration department. Conference Room A apparently is the best conference facility that we have in the township building. They had some pretty good plans, which also included reusing of certain pieces of equipments there, including the storage facility, et cetera. However, once again, looking at criticality of capital outlay, we have ranked it where we have. The next is the pedestrian bridge replacement on Route 206. This is somewhere near the senior living facility, somewhere diagonally opposite Walgreens on Route 206. Once again...
Steve, you gotta be on, you gotta be on the microphone. Nobody can hear you on the, on the camera.
Come on down, Mr. Monte. It's the pedestrian bridge between Raider Boulevard and where Stop &amp; Shop was previously. Right. It's set back up at 206 slightly. Northbound side. Okay, thank you.
That was, you should look at the pictures that was in the package, it looks like it's in pretty bad shape, even though that bridge is, I don't think, more than twenty years old or so. So, you know, we raise a question, you know, how much is the bridge even used? And it's very light, and, you know, what would happen, you know, you'd probably have to have two or three hundred people bouncing up and down, and then it would collapse it in the current condition, so, you know, so it's one of those things, if it happens, it's catastrophic, but the, the chance of it happening is very small, at least in the next few years, so... But it's a recognized problem, and it has to be addressed sooner or later, and that's why it's near the bottom at the number seventeen. Okay, number eighteen was a power broom, front loader. This is a device that they would use to clean up debris off the streets when trees came down and stuff, you know, it's an efficiency item for the Public Works Department. Instead of being out there with several people cleaning up, say, a tree fell, and there's debris all over the road, this would just, you know, speed up that process a great deal. Okay, number nineteen was a new above-ground fueling facility at the Public Works, that would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You know, since, I guess, the county, right, we, right now, you're using the county facilities. So, this would be a situation, you know, if the county got swamped because of the, you know, whatever, we'd have our own capacity, so we saw the need for that potentially, but the, again, the chance of it happening is probably small, so that's why we put it down towards the bottom. And the last one is a, is a automated GTBM E-ticket system. So, you know, right now, if you get pulled over by a police officer, and he's gonna cite you, he gets out his pad like they have for the last hundred years, and they put down all the information that nobody at the courthouse can read, and what this does, it just fills out that thing automatically, which, so, I also like that personal touch when I get a ticket. It also saves, you know, and right now, it takes about five minutes to write a ticket, this reduces it to one minute, so you get your ticket faster. So, anyway...
I think the issue there is not so much the issuing of the ticket, but the processing to the process.
The processing behind, yeah, because I guess, you know, when it's put in manually, a lot of stuff can get mistyped, I mean, whoever inputs the data to the system might and the officer has bad handwriting, or it's raining out, I guess, it's, so, and that was a ten-thousand-dollar item, so, but...
To Mr. Delkor's point out here, that was another question for the chief, and apparently, with all administrative processing back end and front end, it saves only about seven and a half minutes per ticket.
Seven and a half minutes per ticket? You know how many tickets we write in a month?
I wouldn't know, Frank, I don't care.
Yeah, it's a drive, right? Because it's a drive, I don't know if we ought to encourage it.
Plus, if I recall, there is a per-ticket fee using that system.
Yeah.
That would have an impact on the, on the...
It's the offset, yeah.
Yeah, but it would have an impact on the police OE budget.
And I guess you pointed out that the township actually doesn't get the revenue from these, these tickets, it goes to the state, so... Okay, so that's our proposals.
Does it go to the state, or does it go to?
No, the fine, I think he was, the fine money.
The fine.
The money goes to the state, and some to the county, and some to you.
Correct.
I thought you meant, I thought you meant the dollar fee.
No, no, no.
You get the dregs?
That goes back to the, to the service provider here.
Okay.
Okay, so that's it.
Thank you both. Any questions on the presentation?
I don't know if any of the department heads want to come up and defend?
Bob, you want, you know, Bob, you want us to talk about the senior bus anymore?
What are you saying?
Well, I might, just for everyone's edification, Bob did have a very nice YouTube video to demonstrate the bus he was looking to phase out.
Yes, thank you, it was, it was a very nice visual with everything rattling around. The bus that's on there is, is similar to the one that was there for last year, it's just a model year newer. It's just part of a vehicle replacement program. The one that we're looking to replace is ten-plus years, approximately about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We were granted one, I believe it was in 2014, that we have, that it's running fine, but it's, you know, it's forty-five or fifty thousand on that. So, we did try to rotate it in, but eventually, the one that we're looking to replace does have several windows that have, you know, they're kind of double-pane, like what you'd have at home. They, the seals have cracked, so now they're fogged, you know, you have those windows at home that have that constant fog in them, and it's just, you know, it's, again, it's ten-plus years on the roads of Hillsborough, you know, carting our seniors around, so again, at some point, it's gonna need to be replaced, but well, if we don't get it this year, I'm sure it'll be back for next year as well. Oh, the chip seal for the, for Dougherty Park, that's part of a three-year program that we're initiating in the Parks Department to revamp Dougherty Park. It's the parking lot by the pavilion is the area that we're looking to chip seal, and then the parking lot in the far corner where the soccer and lacrosse gets played. This is not the high-performance chip seal that Tom had mentioned, but just a regular chip seal that you would use really just for a parking lot. So, that's, I think it's, what is it, thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars? It's relatively inexpensive, because you're just gonna be driving and parking cars on it, so it's not street use, but those lots have not been done, I believe, since prior to 2000, and with some of the other upgrades that we were looking to do, and the feedback from the residents that park on it and that sort of, so we thought it appropriate to put it in for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
You're welcome.
Rich, would you like to add anything for your trucks, or any, your brine maker, or anything, or?
Actually, I have a, I have a question for Rich, he can come up. It's always nice to see Rich. So, I know we've talked about this in the past, the, the financial advantage of making your own brine versus purchasing it or using it the way you are now, and the savings that having your own system would give you.
The time savings is in the labor.
In the labor.
Yeah. Everything that we do, we believe we're a leader in the snow plowing industry compared to the other towns, and everything that we can do and do on our, by ourselves, do it faster. We brought this whole technology into this area with Jeff Huxley, our supervisor, and that was basically making our own brew, basically, on our own makeshift operation, and we still have that, like that, and other towns have been, you know, way ahead of us with this technology now. We believe that we, we should be at the forefront of this to, to apply it, because the fire companies have been gracious enough to give us their old tankers, we're repurposing those. We could spread it, now if we can make it ourselves, we'll be way ahead of the game.
Would any other municipalities want to share and purchase this material from you, if you could make it?
We could research that, but we'll keep it busy.
We'll keep it busy.
And that's the thing, we're not putting much down there.
You need to max it out.
Yeah. What we're doing now is we're, what little we do make, we have the tanks that are right on the new trucks, that apply the, the brine right to the salt, and that allows it to stick to the road a lot better. So, we are getting some use out of what we have, but if we have our own brine maker, we have the facility and the room in the garage to do that, I believe we would be the best at it, because we know what we're doing with it. But it'll also allow us to make some unique combinations, too, because that's what the system allows you to do. I know Montgomery's using the beet juice and all that stuff, and, you know, it'll allow us to kind of... us to kind of experiment with that.
Less, uh, rough on, on the road surfaces, uh, beet juice and that kind of stuff? It's not eating up?
Well, the, the, the sodium is terrible when it comes down to it. And New Jersey uses the most salt out of any other state, uh, we've come to realize. And we want to lessen that if we can. This year, we've kind of scaled down a little bit the developments. We're not too aggressive there, so if we know it's going to be a little warmer the next day, we're really monitoring, you know, what the future's going to be, so we're not just applying for nothing. It is expensive, you know, to put salt down. Sometimes you can get spoiled with that, where you assume, you know, everything's going to disappear in about five hours after a snow, and it's, it's better that it doesn't. Put down what you need and not, not more than you need.
Well, yeah, so, so if you have this, then I guess this would require some kind of maintenance, and perhaps in five years or ten years or whenever it may need to be replaced? So that kind of cost, and just, just overall, do you take that into consideration, like, on a sustainable, like, long-term plan? Would it be cost-effective and, uh?
I believe the system that we're looking at, uh, has a good shelf life, because it's all stainless steel. So the, the system itself that makes the brine is, it, it's going to withstand the corrosion, you know, from that environment. So they're well-made. Now they're a couple years into it. Maybe it's better that we waited a little bit, because the technology has gotten better from the makers, so we're not, you know, the first out of the gate with that. Everybody else was the guinea pig, so we could look at it that way, too. I think now is, now is the right time, if it could be afforded. I would like to also, I, I thank the capital planning committee. We really appreciate, uh, the efforts that you guys have made in having our fleet maintenance be what it is. We have moved to a twenty-year truck. We were, we were trying to get twenty years out of, uh, twelve and fifteen-year trucks with the MAX series that we've been purchasing. We've noticed, uh, four more production, they're larger. We get more mileage out of the salt because the beds are larger, um, and, and the comfort and everything else, just, the whole process is that much more professional and efficient. So, thank you, too. You know, the, you're in a couple years into this, where we've been getting the trucks, the guys notice it. It's, uh, it's morale that, you know, makes the department go, too. And when they see it invested in, it's a good investment.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Rich.
I could just add one more thing.
Sure.
Uh, just to sell the, uh, the high-performance chip seal, there's a rubber component to that. That's the science. The, the trick is in the science with that, uh, technology. Uh, the rubber mixed with the asphalt allows it to have better adhesion, uh, more durability. The oxidation process is much better, it lasts a lot longer. So you could be safe in a ten-year assumption with that. Branchburg is very fortunate to have done that first, because, you know, again, they're the guinea pig with that, we're able to see their success, uh, their supervisors love it, um, our guys have researched it. Uh, in fact, the presentation was like a science project from the company. So it's kind of a proprietary blend. It's the rubber, the crumb rubber, just like they use on, on athletic fields, the ground up tires. And that, that's the component that makes it, makes it give and flexible, and that's what we need in these, you know, zero degrees to fifty degrees, and, you know, roads are heaving and then thawing, so. I just wanted to put a plug in for that. We've been trying to get it done for a while now, and, uh, I think once we do it, we'll see success, less black ice, too. You know, that, that's what that surface also, uh, does, so. Rich recipe.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, thank you. So at this point, anyone in the dais have any thoughts about the rankings movement either way? Anything that we would change, modify before we would send it up to, uh, the committee to, for their thoughts?
The only thing that, that I saw missing from a column was the high, medium, and low. Because what I've seen, what I recall in the past is usually the, the additional column that says it's high, medium, or low priority.
Uh, we did have that.
I know you guys said the, I know the exercise was done.
Yeah, the, the high, medium, low, uh, was really used as a, as a first, uh, blush, if you will, when, when the committee looked at all the projects to try and get them a little more manageable. And then they attached the numerical ranking to each project after the low, medium, high exercise.
I, I, as I recall, uh, I think the highs went down to, uh, ten or eleven. Uh, ten being the erosion control measures, and eleven being the Ford three fifty, uh, for public works. I think that's where we put the cut, uh, but I could have been off by one or two.
Correct.
Thank you. And I would imagine that the, the road projects would be about the same, just, uh, you're just all ranked, and obviously with number one with the money and then down from there.
Yeah, definitely, you know, one and two are high. And, you know, again, we're not supposed to think about the money, just prioritize the leadership committee. But, uh, you know, in, in this case, uh, number three on the roads was, um, uh, South Triangle, so, you know, maybe if the number one beacon is paid for a hundred percent, maybe you can get down to that, because that road is definitely, uh, needs repair.
Okay. Anya?
Yeah, you should talk to it. I, I would just mention one thing, and because, because it's low, the, uh, the chip seal parking at Dougherty Park, haven't used that for a number of years personally. You know, I think that's a great idea, and it's such a low cost, I would say it's definitely cost-effective, and it would be a great benefit, given the, given the low price. So I just want to make that comment.
Okay. So, um, you would, if you had your way, would move that up to scale a little bit, just because of the cost?
Yeah, probably, yeah, I mean, it's not a safety thing, I guess, as much, but, but as far as being cost-effective, given the low price.
Okay.
I'd suggest maybe moving it up.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, guys.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The board's task now is to, uh, consider the rankings that were just presented to you, and to decide if you want to in any way alter the ranking, and then, uh, perhaps adopt a resolution recommending, uh, your final ranking onto the township committee for their action.
Thank you, David. Anya, committee members have any thoughts, being that they're the ones that actually pull the trigger?
No.
Okay.
How it was presented is?
Yeah, as is, all right.
An ample opportunity to, uh?
To talk about it later.
Yes.
Yeah, I, in, in, in my particular opinion, I think that they did a very good job of, uh, of balancing, um, the, the rankings, uh, as they always do. Uh, yeah, there are some things that you could consider to move either way, but I'm sure that the committee can, can, in their ample wisdom and knowing what the budget is closer, can move things around, try and get the maximum for the, the dollars. But, um, yeah, I do agree, uh, in the, um, the first three or four, the, you know, the various projects that have been ongoing to get those finished, because we made the debt, we made the effort to start them, I think it's important that we finish them, i.e. the, uh, the wood guy, uh, rails that we've been trying to finish, uh, sidewalks, you know, we've been replacing trucks on an ongoing basis here to update our fleet. I think that's all been considered here, and I think it's, they're kind of in line. The only concern that I had in talking with our police department is, is these camera things. That's kind of a big nut that if we get hit with that, uh, all at once, I was hoping maybe we could break that up, but it doesn't look like that's possible. So I don't know if that is movable or not, being that it is obviously a, this day and age, the car camera systems are pretty important for safety and litigation reasons. But that'd be the only thing I thought about that, possibly. Other than that, I think it's all done very well, and it would move to move it as is, if, unless other than changes that were made. Uh, oh, we can do public on this? Okay. Open to public for, for comments.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Public, questions, comments? You're it? All right. Well, you can watch it on the video. All right, motion to close public.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do we have a motion to send this up the hill, as they say, as presented? Or any modifications that you feel to be needed?
I'll make motion, as is.
As is, thank you, Stephanie. Second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll take a roll call.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Edstach?
Yes.
Mr. Smorowski?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman LaCalle?
Yes, and thank you again to our committee for the time and for our professionals to come out tonight and help us out. So we now go to, uh, no special committee reports, no considerations, no correspondence. Our next meeting scheduled is March first. Are we on with that, Mr. Maskey?
Currently, there is nothing on the agenda.
Are we leaving that open, or are we just?
Next week, so.
So there's nothing, all right, so then we will make a motion to cancel March first?
I make a motion to cancel.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, March first is off the books. March eighth, Mr. Maskey.
We should leave that one on.
We should leave that one on. So our next meeting as scheduled will be March eighth, uh, regular time, seven-thirty here. And then the twenty-second meeting still is, is maybe no? We'll see. We'll, we'll make that decision in a couple weeks. All right, so with that, we will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Eight thirty-five.